Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the town of Star Valley Ranch Town Council Work Session Tuesday, December 9th at 10:00 a.m. We do have a quorum of council members in attendance. Councilman Bitter is on Zoom. And let the record also reflect that we have Town Administrator Akin, Town Clerk Hurd, Town Engineer Welling also, and Town Building Official Kazir in attendance. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as written.
I have a motion from Councilman Ellis to approve the agenda. Could I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Toolson. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, moving on. So let's go right to discussion items. And the first thing is the administrator's update. So Mr. Ray.
So I'll make my update a little bit short because we have Ryan here. Things I would talk to you about is talking to him instead of me trying to make sense of stuff. It's all my idea. So one thing we did have Richard Teton was give burn some piles of stuff that they piled up years ago. This summer, we did a lot of firework stuff and tried to help motivate them to help us out and make improvements. And they were going to burn today, but given the weather, they just called and said, "Not going to work."
I wondered how they were going to do that.
There's six piles up there they need to take care of. We had a little help on motivating them from someone who works for the Forest Service out in the area that might be, you know, related to somebody that works here in the city. So we'll get those done at some point. Obviously, if you want to talk about plowing, this is kind of the perfect story for us where it's snowed a lot. We've got about 14 inches of snow. And then it's 39, 40 degrees outside raining. So it's a slush fest and the guys are out there doing what they can. Keeping in mind we're trying to save through the dirt parts of the road or damage that they pay for. It's quite a challenge what they're out there doing what they can.
Can I make a comment related to that? As someone who's been out trying to plow this morning, you can't move on those roads without chains. And the chains are causing problems everywhere. And that snow is doggone wet. The snow lower will pack up like concrete. So they're doing a heck of a job. That's all I've got to say on that one.
Can I ask a question? So I had some people reach out to me over the weekend. Do we have a plow schedule through the weekend? I know we work Monday through Thursday, but is there a plan to have people out on the roads Monday through Sunday?
It's asked.
Depending on...
They were out on Friday and Saturday.
Okay. When I was gone, but I just got people calling me and...
Yeah.
School buses getting stuck.
We've got a lot of people who've moved in from Walmart class. And one lady, we've got the first one who's going to wear the red boots. And she didn't realize women should be allowed fat here. You're laughing, you're laughing about that. There's a lot of unprepared people with bald tigers and things like that. The guys were out, as needed. Zach was pretty good show over there. Our guys are always looking for overtime too. So it's, we don't anticipate any problems. It just, it takes a lot of time to keep the show clear. So I did send out, you know, with our large, full view supply. And the guys will unpack and look at them and make sure we have everything we need. And then they'll start to install those. So there's one maybe I want to share here. It's still kind of in the idea stage, but, excuse me. We anticipated that our SMO might be out for a couple of weeks in the beginning. And that has evolved to months. And that's presented some challenges. So I knew I can address those concerns while he's gone. But it kind of highlighted some of the issues we have and how the SMO program works. It's not specific to the person, but just how the board there is. If our SMO takes vacation, nobody's here to really do anything. And if he's out with it, you know, whatever kind of issue going on, we're kind of dead in the water. So it takes quite a bit of time to find and train somebody to do that job on a temporary basis. So I briefly discussed this with Zach and with the mayor just as an idea. But there's some things that still need to work out. I think that instead of having one position that addresses the ordinances of the town, it might be better to take three people public works. And eventually, long-term, convert that position maybe to a public work position. And then we have three sets of eyes on the road that have authority to write citations for plowing across the road at night. So we have to call, find somebody to come in and has the authority to write a citation. Well, we have three sets of eyes out there. They can address the problems as we see them. So that's kind of what I'm trying to work on for the future and a long-term solution here. So obviously, the problem of that is managing it and making sure that the ordinance issue is good addressed. Just throwing that out there as an idea right now. And it's kind of what we're trying to work out to see if we can make that make sense.
So in thinking about it, it's just, you know, we all know we have a single set of eyes officially in our SMO position to enforce ordinances and write citations. So again, trying to think out of the box a little bit. So I appreciated the, you know, Trevor and Zach kind of discussing that as a possibility, something to work towards. I don't know if, and I know you're just hearing it for the first time right now. So I don't know if any council members have any, you know, immediate thoughts. Again, something that's just kind of being noodled around right now. Jane, Ray?
Everything else I have on the list is already in the agenda items.
Okay. We get to those? Okay. All right, thank you. Let's move on to financials. Treasurer Mason is in a training class right now. So I believe Councilman Bitter, you were going to walk us through the financials for this month, if you could?
Yes, I can do that. So I sent everybody a, just a summary of, you know, our financials for through the period of November. So I'll just kind of highlight that. And if you have any questions, you can, you know, bring them up after I get through that. The, hold on, let me find you here. Can we pull it up? Wasn't ready for it.
Got you, it's sooner than you were expecting.
Okay, here we are. So year-to-date, this will all be year-to-date because the months really don't mean anything individually. So everything that I speak to is, it's all year-to-date. On the general fund side, our year-to-date revenue is lower than budget by $22,000. And that is mainly due to property tax in the month of November being lower by $22,000. Otherwise, our gross revenue or general fund revenue is basically right on the budget. And that takes into account that the fifth penny and the sales tax has been up and down, up and down. But that's been looking really good. It's actually better than what we even budgeted on one of them. And I'll get to that in a second. On the expense side for general fund, the expenses are $51,000 lower than what we budgeted. So that is, and it's due to multiple line items that have lower spending here. So that's a good positive note. And on the year-to-date general fund capex or capital spend, we are lower by $105,000 year-to-date. And that's due to lower spend on the chip sale projects that we've completed or were able to complete before the letter term. So generally speaking, on the cash balance where we sit on the general fund, we're at about $195,000 higher than what we had forecasted in the budget. On the water fund side, our year-to-date revenue is higher by $212,000. Now, that is due to the additional grants that we received that we did not budget in the budget. And that was about $175,000 of that $212 favorable. And then the tap-ons are an additional $37,000 of above-budget revenue. On the expense side for water fund year-to-date, we are slightly higher on total spend of about $17,000. And that's mainly due to higher supplies, parts, repairs of about $47,000. And that is offset somewhat by, or almost entirely by lower wages. We are down on the wages and benefits, $32,000 year-to-date on the water fund. So that gives us about our $17,000 slightly higher. And then on the year-to-date capital spend, we are lower by a very large $1,074,000. And that is due mainly to the lake meter spend and the spending on the tank work that needed to be done. And so it's basically timing at this point in time. So our water fund cash balance is $874,000 higher than what we had budgeted through November. The overall cash balance for general fund and water fund is about $1,069,000 higher than we had budgeted. So again, not spending the money mainly due to the capital spend and plus we got higher revenue on the water side. Note, the fifth penny and the sales and use tax receipts for a year-to-date are $6,000 lower than budgeted. Okay? So we had decided not to reduce our budget by the 8% that the county and state said that we were going to be short. And as of right now, we are only under 1% lower than budget on those two line items through November versus the 8% that we had forecasted. So we are coming in a little higher now than what they had estimated and just better than the lower budget. So that's kind of the summary of the financials. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Wade, I've got a number of questions, but they're specific to line items. For example, shop supplies on water is up six, almost seven times what we budgeted.
Yes, and that was part of that overage. If you want to know specifically why, I don't have that answer, but I can take the notes and follow up with you.
Yeah, there were a number that were up off by, you know, internet access was up two and a half times. One Call of Wyoming was up two, two and a third times. Sewer was up over three and a half times. Has rates gone up that much?
Well, that's the question. Is it an anomaly? Is it the way we budgeted monthly versus, you know, potentially having two bills or the timing of those bills coming in?
It could be a timing issue.
But again, we've got those identified and spotted on the financials that we give to you, the detail. And what I want to do is go through that now and be able to identify, hey, there is, there's a line behind the miss, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, and if I can add, on the shop supplies ones, because I did notice a few of those that were, you know, significantly over what we've budgeted. And in talking with Loretta, I believe a lot of what's in that line has to do with a lot of the testing we're having to do for EPA and some of those things. And so we kind of talked briefly about, at least for the EPA portion of how much money we end up spending on testing and retesting. It might be better to break it out separate because I would like to know how much all that, all those requirements cost us. But that was just one thing.
I like your suggestion a lot. Let's come up with a separate line item for it, okay?
One call was way up because of the Silverstone project. We went through cases and cases of paying more in lines.
Okay, all right. But no, all good things to point out and for us to look at before we get budgeting again in the spring, so.
Sure, sure. And then let me say, I don't think we had any more notes on the agenda. We did receive the draft, the 2025 audit. And so we're going to be spending some time going through that as well. Or at least I am now creating my questions for the op firm. So that's going on as well.
All right, any other questions for Councilman Bitter? Okay, thank you, Councilman Bitter, appreciate it. All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda is the building official report. Mr. Kazir, what do you have for us today?
Well, as far as the building is concerned, it slowed down hints of weather. So mainly, all we've been looking at is COs. But we got a lot of other projects going at the time. Hence, the cable's on the floor. We're trying to test the new mixer today. So we'll see how that sounds. Hopefully, we'll upgrade, you know, with the broadcast, so. Then we got other projects going on over at the shop. We're installing, still in the process of putting in the new office there. So we're doing electrical on that and putting in some new heaters over there for Zach, for his equipment over there. We're also still in the process of finishing up the new SCADA, simply SCADA systems. We're just waiting on a couple routers to finish up. I suspect we should have all pump houses online by the end of the week. I think Trevor got a report back from them on what the format. So they're still in the process of getting all the platform, you know, built, what the screen's done, the final, you know, screens going to look like. And we're still trying to figure out, you know, make sure everything's implemented on that, so. So we got the SCADA. Then we're also still working on the new septic, you know, program. So we're hoping we can get, move forward with that as well. As far as, you know, getting that pushed through because we've gotten, you know, a lot of information we're trying to work through and we're still pretty firm. I think as far as the pricing goes, I think we found out some other areas that we weren't looking at. So we probably need to take a second look at on the cost, you know, with all the testing and things that could possibly, you know, be involved with that.
With SCADA or?
With the septic.
Oh, with the septic?
Yes.
I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, no, the SCADA will be still in the process. Same with the septic, but we're trying to move forward with septic. We're just trying to make sure that we have all the costs, you know, built into that permit fee, which, you know, I think we're going to have to come some sort of decision on what that final fee is going to be. I think that's our holdup is what...
Yeah, we'll talk about that. We'll talk about that a little bit. While you're here and on the hot seat, I had a couple of comments from residents about the house that's being built on the corner of...
East Street.
Parkins and East Street.
Yes.
Right, and now that's on a, is that on a combined lot, a double lot?
It is.
It is. The comments have just been in general that it's a really large house and the garage doors are humongous. And but is that another...
It's 34 feet tall.
Yeah, so it's...
34, 7 inches.
So it's right at the top. And then is that another post frame or is it a, what kind of structure is that?
Well, I guess you'd almost call it a barn, another barn dominium.
Barn dominium, yeah, yeah.
You know, he jumped through a lot of hoops to get that thing built. And it was a bit of a process before we actually permitted it.
Right.
So I know that no one's happy about it.
Right.
And especially the next-door neighbor.
I bet, yeah.
So I've heard all the complaints.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to bring it up so that for the council, if you hear anything, you know, that's, again, it's within our code. And if there are things that we need to try and update in the code, add more design regulations, you know, that's something we can look at. Planning Commission can talk about it too. But it is, it meets our building code right now.
It does. And, you know, basically, he is going to live in it part-time. I know that it's probably going to be potentially permitted out as well. So I don't know. But he's, he's met all the codes and he's jumped through all the hoops. And it was a process and he made all the changes necessary to get it built.
As far as the pumps, when are they going to start being installed? Because you're the one who has to install those, right?
The pumps?
Yeah, the, or the...
Flow meters?
On the big tanks, right?
On the big water lines, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, the flow meters, sorry.
Yeah, the flow meters, I guess, what is our ETE on us, you know? What is, I know that there was a setback on the flow meters.
They arrived though, the large meters arrived.
A day ago.
Yeah.
So maybe Thursday. So we can see make sure everything's in there between Scott and Water Department. I would say end of next week, hopefully. I don't know if we'll have all six of them installed by then, but...
Okay.
Because...
Don't know how long.
I mean, the SCADA stuff, whether you need to...
Yeah, Zach's department is actually installing. I'm just doing the control.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. That makes sense.
And on the SCADA system, the schematic and the basic layout is slightly different from what it was before, but it's accurate and it tends to make more sense the way you read it because there was a little confusion before by the way the lines ran. This one's clearer.
We've got a few tweaks there tonight to work on.
It's a lot clearer than it was.
And then the new flow meters will just be read by the SCADA pretty easily? Okay, transfer information and everything?
Yeah, that's part of, you know, Ryan can talk this, but going through his water update. Caliber bills, that's a priority. Well, actually, know what's coming in. So that's a big plus for us.
Any other questions for Mr. Kazir?
I had a, there's a house in Sunrise, Sunrise, that is too tall.
Yeah.
How is that being taken care of? And why is that, so this is against our ordinances? So are our ordinances the same for them? I would assume.
He's trying to, yeah, I caught the house, it was too tall. And we went there and he's trying to rectify that by bringing the grade up.
Who's the general? And why is bringing the grade up legal compared to, I mean, why, why is it to the point, what is getting missed along the process?
Yeah, I...
I'm not even done asking my question. What is getting missed along the process that a house is being overbuilt by that many feet?
How many?
Seven is my understanding.
No, it's not seven.
How, do you guys know?
Yeah, what, what, Councilman Ellis can add to this?
I ended up being the one that showed up when this thing started coming up with. We called the plans up on the computer and attempted to expand them as much as possible. And then we went to the plans that had been turned in that were the smaller dimension. If you look at the way the printing of nine and eight comes, looks like, it's virtually impossible to tell the difference on a very small scale. And until we went to, what were they, 36 or 48-inch plans? You couldn't tell that it was nine feet between each one of them. It read eight feet on all the small stuff, which is what we look at. So recommended that Scott and Loretta get the big plans to look at, which is the reason it got permitted. So it should be three feet because there were three different levels and maybe four feet because there was one foot in between the three levels. And it was off by one. It looked like eight, when in fact it was nine.
So how far is it off?
Seven feet. Well, and then they raised the four another foot on each level.
So was there a stop order?
Well, we went to stop, we had a big meeting about it and...
Who's we?
Me, Councilman...
I went up with Scott, talked to the contractor.
Yes.
And also, we had the homeowners association from Sunrise was involved as well since that's part of their subdivision. And Mr. Somfeld's here for that. So the, I mean, the bottom line is the town made a mistake in approving the permit initially.
I missed it initially on the plants.
But you said it was two feet on the plants.
Yeah.
There were three levels. And it was one foot difference on each one of the three levels. So that was three feet.
Yeah, our ordinance is very clear.
Our ordinance has been the same for a long time. He's a general that's coming up on the rest of this list. He knows how to build here. I don't understand why there wasn't at least a stop work order or at least the rest of it. Why I wasn't, I mean, why it's coming to me in a public forum and not, unless you guys had plans to talk about it at this meeting, pretty frustrating as a councilperson to hear this because why is that? It's illegal and there should be a stop. That's just opening a can of worms for everybody else that's building.
And it's concerning too because I know the annexation will come up, but the big reason that you all wanted to annex them in was so that we could, you know, keep our ordinances on that property. And we're not even keeping it on our own, in our own municipalities. So I'm highly concerned to just now be hearing about this anyway.
So again, there was a mistake that was made when the plans were approved. And then there was some, the builder was brought in, the homeowners association from Sunrise was brought in. And Trevor and Scott also sat down with Councilman Ellis and they worked out, you know, we talked to the town attorney as well. Since we approved it at a certain height, we can't then do take backs, you know?
Well, you can if it's still even over that. I think that that's an issue with the builder and I don't think...
Again, we did talk to the town attorney about that. So it was approved at the height it was approved at. And that's what it's going to be built to and it won't be built over that. And I understand that it's above... I understand that it's above the 35 feet that our ordinances require.
If you bring the grade up, it's less footage for...
Like seven feet?
Well, it's not probably...
It's only one into the house.
Yeah, yeah. Because it's on a slope too.
Actually, the grade can be brought up. My measuring point comes from the bottom of the sliding glass door on the daylight basement.
Yep.
And how tall is that?
That height, depending on who measured it, is either 39 or 42 feet. So...
So what is the builder's reasoning for this? I mean, I'm trying to understand how this happened. Yes, a mistake by two feet is one thing that needs to be addressed and a scale issue for sure, but not the seven. And I do not understand why at least a stop work order wasn't done until either a variance or something was completed. It seems very shady at this point.
I agree.
The two of us haven't even been, I had no idea.
Everybody was weighed involved with the conversation?
And like, how did, was the decision made? And did the builder agree or was...
I asked the town administrator and the town building official to get it worked out with the builder and with the homeowners association at Sunrise. And that's, they came to an agreement on that. And we again talked to the town attorney as far as what are the town's abilities in terms of, you know, trying to make someone tear something down? What does our ordinances allow? So there are things that we could probably, and the town attorney has advised this, that we should look at our ordinances to determine are, are there things we can include for when people do things that are outside the building code to the point where the town would want them to rip them out? Right now, we don't have anything to be able to enforce that in our code to that level.
Well, we do, it says 35 feet.
The town attorney.
Well, she's talking about the repercussions of homeowner building.
So we typically don't have public comment in a work session, but I'm going to, you have a question, Mr. Royan?
Thank you. I actually have two. This issue came to me last night from a contractor, not the one involved in building it. So I've got two questions. The first one is, even if they bring the grade up, is there anything that prevents them from, after getting sign-off on the total bill, that keeps either the homeowner or the contractor that does it from taking the grade back down? And then leaving us with the code violation. And the other question is, isn't the correct way to deal with this to have the contractor come to the council and ask for a variance? Rather than have one council member and the building inspector go out and come up with a plan that the rest of the council isn't necessarily aware of?
There was literally no plan there. When I went out with Scott and looked at the building, we were looking at what had been approved. And unfortunately, when that was approved, that was three, maybe four feet off. And I would encourage anybody to go down and look at the documents that Scott had, both online and what was submitted to him. Which is the reason recommendation has gone to go to a better quality plans.
The bottom line is the contractor works here.
What I'm wondering about is the amount, three feet is not the same as seven or nine. So if the mistake is one to three feet, you still have a four to six-foot variance that you would need.
I was not involved in that part.
So the, on the variance, you know, because typically that would be what the process is. In talking with the town attorney, since the town permitted it to the height that we did, and if the grade is corrected to get it there, it kind of makes the variance moot because the town... it kind of makes the variance moot, because the town already authorized it to be to a certain height.
The town did not authorize that.
The town building official and.
Who didn't?
We made a mistake on.
A mistake is two feet, like not seven.
Well, you're not aware of the mistake we made then. So it, with what we signed off on originally, with him building without the grade, it would mean what we signed off on originally.
But why is it measuring differently?
Because it's a daylight basement. So you have, you have, it's, you have more exposure on one end versus the other. We're talking about the grade, because on one end, you got lower grades, so you're getting the longer measurement.
So what, has he already put the top soil in?
I, I have, I don't know.
So I'm, I'm concerned that something was given to him, to allowing him to do this. And I feel like we've made people tear out their foundations before. So why is somebody allowed to come to our town? They definitely knows better, because they've built here before. And for it to be this extreme? I'm not understanding why they are getting the exception.
So it's not an exception. What we signed off on originally is going to, we don't have recourse for that. And we said you can build it this high, and he does that, and we don't have recourse.
But it is higher still.
It is, it's not going to be higher.
Because you're allowing him to put top soil in to resolve the situation.
The way the ordinance reads, it's the height from the highest point of the, the roof to the ground.
I know the ordinance.
So if the soil is up high enough, then he meets, who's approved?
This is unacceptable to me.
I agree. My name is not on this decision at all. And it's, I want the record to state that we were not involved in this decision at all. And it seems like we're covering a general contractor's.
Mistake.
Mistake, and he knows better when he's building in this. It's not our fault that we signed off on it. It is the homeowner and the contractor's fault for even bringing it to us when they've built here.
I'm gonna, I'm just gonna state that, as we've said, the town did make a mistake on approving it at the height that it was approved at. No one is covering for anybody. And the way this is, the situation was resolved was working with the homeowners association at Sunrise and the contractor and the homeowner and our town administrator and the building official to come to resolution. And that is what the resolution was determined to be. And I apologize that the rest of the council wasn't involved in the discussion. And that is where the situation currently stands. So we'll make sure in the minutes it's reflected, that Councilman Maryland, Councilman Toolson, were not aware of this situation.
What, what, when I was involved in the discussion with the builder and Trevor was there, uh, I know that our building code says thirty-five feet. I know beyond that, it would be okay for a commercial building. So the question I put to the builder was, is this structurally sound? Is there, if you go beyond thirty-five feet into what would be considered commercial, is there a different set of structural design requirements? And he said, oh yeah, it's fine, structurally fine. Well, I don't know. You know, I understand the position the town, town itself is in, and, uh, you know, it's a few feet too high, it looks bad, but, you know, it looks bad. If it's structurally sound and there was a legitimate, easy to understand mistake made on our part, well, I support allowing the process to go forward. The builder did ask me, uh, what I thought should be done. I said, tear it down and build it right. And, uh, you know, that's my opinion. You can't do it right, don't do it, or in your case, follow the rules. But it's done.
So it's not complete, actually? The house is not complete?
It's, uh, stick frayed and it's covered. And there hasn't been any way. They've come back to the town apparently wanting to put a deck on the side that we see from the road to perhaps improve the, uh, appearance. There hasn't been anything done over there since then. I don't know where they're at.
And we don't know if the top soil was put in yet?
Yeah.
I mean, that's a concern too, when you broke the rules and someone's trying to give you a way to fix it and it's not being fixed. I'm just very concerned, because I pretty much know other contractors that would not do that. But if they did, I'm pretty sure we'd also come down hard on them. So I'm trying to understand why this was seen and allowed this way. I'm not understanding it.
Okay. I went through it and we'll make sure it's reflected in the minutes. So any other questions for building official Kazir? Okay, moving on. Status of water system chlorination? And then the next item is also residential meter replacement. And this is why we asked Ryan to come, so he can help contribute to this. So Trevor, I don't know if you want to start us out and go from there?
As far as chlorination goes, this is, uh, we're now under the mandate by the EPA to have the chlorination. So, um, I can read it from here, this is right off our level two assessments. It's section five. EPA requires corrective action on script, you, you know, it says here, EPA is now requiring disinfectory being active at all times in the distribution system at the town's star valley ranch immediately. And then there's another section, um, EPA due date documentation required. It says if we have their coordination to the water system, must begin immediately. So it is not a, it is not something we have any ability to take care of. So thought process on this. We had fourteen scope form positive samples when we ended chlorination. So EPA has a lot of, a lot of evidence on their side to make this. I suggested a couple of times we, we go and voluntarily turn the porting back on. We did that this week. And when they did the level two assessment, that was mandated came out. So, um, we don't have any ability right now to show that we've done something differently, although we, we have the inside of the Green Canyon tank line. That's not off their list until the outsized line, that's probably around June. Just guessing on whether we'll get that done. But if we want to actually take a shot at this, I think the only shot, and it's a low percentage chance in the future of ever getting off, would be once the distribution line is done, once the small predate tank is replaced or whatever we're going to do there. I don't think we have opportunity to even get anywhere in the conversation with EPA. And we may have a difference of opinion here. I've dealt with them a ton in the last few weeks. I've been on the phone with a lot of them. And I think that is the only possibility, um, still giving a very low percentage.
Yeah, EPA, way throughout Wyoming, because Wyoming's the only state that does not have privacy over, uh, water. Still we're under federal EPA, every other state has their own EPA that they go through. Um, but there, we held that on, on chlorine of every system. Even if we try as much as we can, um, they're, they're not very lenient on, on any of the decisions. That's kind of, that's kind of a, a tribute experience dealing with EPA.
So we, um, I talked to Jamie here, she was on main contact there. We're trying to get off the lane, and she said, mark my words, it is my goal to keep you on. That's what my job is, and that's what we're going to try to do. And when we got off, she called to say, if you fail, I'll see to it you go back on and you'll never get off again. So those reform conversations are not, they're not in writing, but that's the conversation we have. Now, people change, people retire, people get promoted, I don't know what could happen. But that is currently the rhetoric from the EPA on this. And I want to be clear to you, if you add up wages and everything, what we had to do on these assessments, we're well over a hundred thousand dollars into this. Since turning the porting off. And I can tell you, I can speak for the water guys, if you're Zach and myself, there's a hell of a lot of stress, worrying every time, every month, when we do another test, what was going to happen. And talking to other water systems, those that have springs on, saying, well, there's plenty. You can just have a load in your system, prevents any kind of problems. It's peace of mind and it's a lot of stress often does. So we have not had a lot of complaints on this. In fact, the only one I'm aware of is when we announced we're going back on, we got a complaint that day when we turned the porting off on. So I discounted that complaint for obvious reasons. We're not getting complaints on it. And what's in the system is pretty low, and the guys are doing a really good job of monitoring what's, what's going in there.
I think my only concern is that we are keeping our water safe, with or without chlorination. So, you know, without knowing where it was being contaminated, I mean, we had so many different readings from different places. I know at one point we did get a positive from the spring. I think that is more my concern, um, that, yeah, we may not have a choice to chlorinate or not, but we should still be having clean water, no matter what. As far as like, making sure if we needed a new tank, we're getting our tanks done. If we need, um, a new line at Prairie Canyon, we're getting it done. And I think that's where I'm concerned, that we are actually making those things priorities, even though we have the chlorination covering our butts. So that's all.
We are making all these priority, and we have budgeted to continue on with the process here. Heavy input from Ryan here. All these things are in progress and are actually ahead of schedule. If you look at the, the water plant here, we budgeted money for the prater delivery line. So that's what's next on the recommendation list, that one's twenty-four list.
Yeah, we're, we're ahead of schedule getting the, the tank lines. So we've got, moving on that very quick. The only thing I can tell us that was just, was leaking too bad on Green Canyon. Actually put paint on the outside before, so you can do the inside first. But it was, it was too cold, but I think it's, it's.
And I mean, in saying that, like, we've been trying to figure out if we're either replacing that tank or getting it lined for three years. So I'm not saying we're not, but it's like, it's been an ongoing process. So yeah, so that, I think I'm just concerned too, and I'm sure this will come up as far as my emails. You know, after our last meetings, I'm, I'm concerned that we're putting, um, and I'm sure you'll get to this, Ryan, too, but as far as getting the new meters for our residents, like, I think that's very important and definitely should be prioritized. I just want to make sure we have enough money to pay for all this other bigger stuff that we obviously need as well.
So, so one thing, just to make sure, we, I know you put your budget in there and for paying for all of this crater line. We need to go after funding for this. So we're gonna.
You can go ahead. You just mentioned funding. What's this EPA seven million dollar, uh, funding for water? It was just announced. Can we get into that?
It was seven billion, wasn't it?
I read through it yesterday, so it's my opinion. Ryan and I are already talking about it, we fill out the state resolving fund, uh, loan application. There's loan forgiveness on that. And I think we will be money ahead if we go through the, the state with the loan forgiveness. The EPA will give you a low percentage. Now, one of the things that is, you can delay most projects completed for up to five years, potentially. But I think the way to get the most amount of money is to do through, go through the state. And it can't be both. But the EPA is not, I mean, I think the interest rates.
Is it seven billion for compensation?
No, it's seven billion.
Seven billion, yeah.
So I think it's by a couple of dollars.
And if you have a, any contact on that, you can send it to me.
So I just got an announcement from the P S government newsroom, and it didn't say much, and I'm not actually going to look at what the requirements were, but.
They're pretty general. It's just a low percentage loan. It's an option.
Okay.
Um, but there's, there's two, one, two that we particularly want to go after, especially with the crater on, um, get it in front of W M D C. If we can get some of it in that spring, that's awesome if we can, we try. But, and then S R F loan. Even if you're going to pay for all of it, get that S R F loan. You guys have qualified for twenty-five percent of the principal forgiveness. So there's a one and a half, right now it's one and a half percent interest rate. Get that S R F loan twenty-five percent principal forgiveness, which paid off. Seventy, twenty-five percent on the project.
Do you have to match, um, do any matching in any of those grants that you mentioned?
You do. Um, so some of that's, so we, we can look at a bunch of other options. The, in the past, actually, the S R F loan, you don't have to match. But in the past, we've matched that with M R G grants. Um, but M R G is kind of mostly just reserved for, for, um, emergencies. Now, there's not a whole lot of money coming in to reverse that grant. It was a great option. I mean, in the past, we've, we've had used M R G on, on all the projects that I've done. We've done S R F loan, about twenty-five percent forgiveness, and the M R G grant. And that was at thirty-three percent of the projects. So all in all, it was, Patman was a loan, and Patman was a grant. But probably four or five years ago, they kind of just washed off. And it's, so this last project, we're able to do with the ARB grant, which is great. And then matching our funds. What, and the nice thing about the, what they did at the ARB grant, is they had to verify that all the money was heading out by the end of twenty twenty-six or something like that. And so they just said, we had the match on it. And so we were prepared to draw a little from there and pay a little from the town reserves. They just said, just draw all from the grant. And then what's ever left, then start with your reserves.
Yeah, it was nice.
One of the key things that we, we haven't done in the past, we're starting to do, is the prater delivery line will be shovel ready by the time we go to the.
We've, we've done that for, for every project.
No, we did it in the same year. This time, the surveying and the engineering will be done before they start putting the grants out. And we're going to do the same thing, if I understand it right, on the water tanks.
So the survey's been done, I received that Friday.
On Prairie, yeah. So I know we're projecting to do that in like, ten years or so, but is that going to be moved up then with?
Yeah, uh, if we can get funding for it, I mean, the earlier you can get these projects in, just because of power inflation, I mean, a million dollar product now versus ten, ten years from now, it could be five million dollar project in this.
The other problem on the prater line is forsters.
So, we're working on building a better relationship there, I think. But if you haven't noticed, I like to get stuff done. So we're trying to get everything done as fast as we can find funding for it. But on your, I know you, you brought up about residential water meters. And that's on this too, but if you look at the twenty twenty-four study, it was written in.
Yeah.
That's one of our biggest issues in the priority number one was water loss. We, until we replace these big meters and know what's coming in, and then we know what's going out, we don't really know what we need to know on how big of a tank to be put up there.
Right. So, so that's why it's number one. I mean, obviously, prater doesn't really, I don't really know. It does deal with demands and stuff, the prater line. But as far as most of your other components, your wells and your tanks, I need to know what the water demands are. I mean, right now, I, I did a quick review of it. The production amount versus the build or the metered amount we're getting, it's thirty-six percent off.
Well, then, why did we get the analysis that you did? Is that even accurate then? From the memorandum that came in the annexation that you did?
She's talking about the impact, the update you did.
I mean, you were already saying that we were, and this was even before we knew the size of our tanks, that didn't come in until fall, but, um, but you mentioned that, you know, that we are, we could assume that we're going to max out on our supply, or our storage capacity, excuse me.
Based off of the, so based because of what data we have, I have to go off of the production. I can't go off of what, what we're using on usage. So if I, if I break out the production value, which is, I think it's, I'd have to look at it again, but say a hundred and eighty million gallons a year. If we're doing thirty percent, that's, that's fifty million gallons, that's a hundred gallon for it. But I have to design for that. I can't design for, for the meters, the residential meters. I don't know if that's accurate.
Okay, so the residential meters?
Right.
So I, I hear what you're saying and I see the importance in that. I think it's just like, also, making sure we have funding for all of this stuff is like, what I'm concerned about. So I don't want us just spending the money when we don't, if we don't even have the money to replace the tanks. Doesn't really matter what we find out as far as residential meters. I also think it just really also points back to our water rates, because our wa, like, our actual water rates on, per gallon is so low that, I mean, I feel like we'd have to. is so low that, I mean, I feel like we'd have to miss almost 200 million gallons of water before we would make the $500,000 back.
One of the things that I kind of recommended in the past, the water boards, I think your rates are fine to a certain point, but there needs to be a little bit of a red flag. Because there's a lot of times, and some of the data that I've looked at, there's a lot of times some users are just using it. Got off on that water, but it's, and it's just month after month. But there needs to be some sort of flag of, okay, it's the, I don't know what it is now, but at one point it was .013, something like that per gallon. But maybe that could be at to a certain point, but I think after that, that's in an egregious amount like 50,000 gallons, we're gonna charge a $1 gallon on that. And maybe we don't charge that, but it just shows it's a red flag on it. And it's, hey, you may have anything on your line, or we might have something going on with the meter, but we need to address that. But I mean, with the meters that we have now, they're mechanical meters. They're, even the new meters now that are steady state, they're 15, 20 years max. These ones were put in in 2009, so they're 16 years right now, mechanical meters, but they're depending on rotating materials, so they're rife with potential errors.
No, and I agree. And I do want the meters.
If we're missing 50 million gallons of actual meter usage in billing, maybe that just even pays for itself.
But it doesn't pay for $500,000. Definitely not.
Over time.
It would take a longer time, unfortunately. And I think that's the number I'm looking at. That I just don't want to be putting that before the fact that we need to keep our water safe and we need some other things. And I think that prater tank, you know, for many years, at least the years I've been here, I've been told it doesn't like need replaced right away or soon, and it sounds like it's falling apart. So I'm like a little concerned about that.
It's over. It's over the Green Canyon.
Yeah, no, and I knew it had already met his threshold of age, but I was still being told it was underground, it was fine, and I'm like, I don't think it's as fine as we thought it was.
The other problem I dropped out is in this last inspection of the tanks and doing the Green Canyon tank. We found out that we don't hold as much water as we thought we did. And so that's created another issue.
So all this data is here in Ryan's report, where he addresses Prater Canyon tank, section 205.12, it says in there. He's talking about Prater Canyon number two, talks about the roof being a valise roof, and has experienced structural damage due to weather conditions and equipment damage. As of today, the tank appears to be in adequate condition, especially considering its age, but it's nearing the end of its life. So all this data is there, saying...
I know. No, I know.
It's like a chicken egg thing. It's like, we wanna do the tank and stuff. We need, or we wanna get the meters replaced, but I can't size the tank unless I know what flows we're getting, what was actual demands. And say this, this planization goes through or whatever, and I think we've got those demands coming in. I can't, I can take what they're maybe projected to use, but I can't actively... I don't, what I don't want to do is I want to put a tank in, but in 10 years, we're over...
Yeah, inadequate. I understand. I know it was in there. I think it's what I have been told by our past town clerk, by other town council people, that that wasn't a concern. And I remember stating that to you over a year ago, that that was my case. So I just want to make sure. Yeah.
Done a lot of reading to find out facts.
Yeah.
I need to see it. That's all you need, is to take what somebody says.
Don't, from what the tank inspector said, if you don't want to get wet, don't stand under that valise roof while somebody's walking on top of it.
That's a good one. So we've kind of been jumping around on both of these, the chlorination, and then kind of rolled into the residential water meters. So I appreciate all the input on, you know, kind of needing to know what water is coming in and what water is going out, so that we can make smart decisions about storage in the future. So we do have the residential water meter bid currently, and I, Trevor, I believe you sent that out. The latest one, when it first came in, it was over our budgeted amount of 500,000.
555.
Yeah, it was at 555. And now, after some discussions, I think it's at 497.
Yep, 497, 364.
Yeah. So I would like, since the council, since we put this in our budget, I would like the council's support for us to go forward with this, since it's part of the bigger puzzle of getting to where we need to get to, to fix our storage in the future. So there is gonna be a motion tonight in the regular meeting to authorize acceptance of the bid. So just wanted the council to have a chance to have Ryan here to talk to him and understand where this fits in to the broader plans. So any other questions about...
Sorry, I just saw this email. The Corin Maine closed on November 17th.
Yeah, let me pull that up here.
So just to avoid confusion, if you look, there's two pages. One says 497, the other page says 550. And that's if you add the 360 customer suite, which I would not recommend. All that does is allow me as a resident to log in and see what I have. I think I like to stay within budget. That's a big thing for me. So I don't think that the extra money would be worth it personally, but...
And if somebody wants to, you'd say it costs $6,000.
Point out, it can be added later.
Yeah, it can be added later. So we're under budget.
That's my question. Can it be added later, Trevor?
I think just the software.
Yeah.
It can be added off, or added later, but I can't tell you what that would cost later.
That's fine. That's fine. Just we have the option, and you can always charge, you know, potentially if people wanted that. But, okay.
Yep.
So yeah, we have 500,000 in the budget, and not counting the software, it would be 497 and...
264.
Yeah, 264.
You still get software, it's just...
Well, not the, sorry, the residential, residents, yes, residents to look at their stuff individually.
I mean, what if we, so, sorry, bringing customers, residents, all of a sudden, they're now getting a new meter, and they're like, oh my God, this is way more than I've ever had to pay. How are we gonna be able to show them? This is actually what your... I mean, if they can't log in and look at it themselves, there is potential for some residents to have this problem if they haven't been being built correctly for the last decade or whatever.
You had a discussion with them about, you know, these are meters that were built into it or put into service in 2009, are still being used. These, those are mechanical meters. These meters are more accurate steady-state flow meters. So it's more accurate mechanical flow of the water they use.
Yeah, so, I mean, you guys will be able, somebody will be able to identify, even if it's not the resident themselves, somebody in public works will be able to identify, no, this is actually what your meter's reading, like, you'll get readings on that.
What we could do is even, I mean, I'm almost positive that most people aren't gonna notice at first if there is any sort of increase, but you could take, you have records of what you've built and what's been used in the past, and you can actually just do a comparison, month to month, of what it actually, like, say, it could have been in January, and we can compare January from the last few years and see what's actually...
And we kind of, we have that happen, I would say fairly regularly, where residents will come in and question their water bill, because they're like, my bill this month was $300, and last October it was, you know, $100. I don't understand. And so either Kelly, or Trevor, or Jamie, someone will sit down and they'll pull up the records and go through things. And then sometimes we even have to get the water guys to go out there to try and determine if there's something wrong. Like, right now, we have a, an issue potentially with the meter that's at the association building, because it's reading, what did they come in and tell us? What was that?
380,000 gallons this month.
So, which is a little high, especially with half the building not working. Yeah, exactly. So there's some issues there, and we're trying to get to the bottom of that. But I understand what you're saying, because some residents, potentially if we put a new meter in, it might change. Like, maybe they've been getting underbilled, or maybe they've been getting overbilled. We don't know. I would like to think most of them are, at least in the ballpark.
Like little underbills, or, I mean, as the mechanical parts age, they slow down.
They slow down, yeah.
I mean, I guess as we put meters in, just putting that out to residents.
Yes, a lot of communication on this is what's happening and, you know, if you have any concerns.
I just even explained that the old meters are these mechanical omni-sensus meters that we're putting in that do stay-state flow meters, and they're more accurate in measuring flow. Even if you want to put a link to what they are.
Any other questions about the residential meter bid or the meter replacement in general? Wade, or, sorry, Councilman Bitter, do you have any questions on this topic?
Well, there's one comment I'd like to make. I'm a data analytics guy, as most people know. I've seen the data that Mayor Sidaway had from way back in 2011 through 2014. If we can get that same data for the last four or five years, it'd be so easy to just spend a few hours going through and identifying any anomalies, back to Ryan's earlier point. Those big changes will pop out. It'd be, I'd be more than happy to spend a few hours on that to be able to identify if there have been significant changes. Again, not that it's gonna solve our problem. My meter is almost 18 years old, has not been changed, so I'd like to see the meters changed. And we need to get that done and do it on a repeatable calendars basis. So every 10 years, if that's what it is, if it's 12 years, whatever, but we budget for it to occur all at the same time. Just makes it, you know, don't kick the can down the road. Because we've got plenty of issues now.
You'd like, Cassel purchased that after three years, but we do have three years of water billing. Is that what you want to see?
Yeah, and I'll come into the office and just show you kind of what I'm looking for, because his data is good, it's just old. And if we had more fresh data, then we could start to figure out, you know, exactly January over January, even some of those different months in each quarter, to see how many have significantly changed. And all we're trying to do is avoid having an angry resident come in and say, look, this can't be right. There's gotta be a problem here. So, yeah.
I mean, the easiest way to go show them what it is is go open the lid, show them the meter, go to their frost room, throw five gallons up there and watch, have them watch it.
Not a bad idea. Okay. All right, thank you, Councilman Bitter. Okay. Moving on, the next item on the agenda are ordinances. Just wanted to quickly cover those. So tonight, we have the second reading of the budget amendment ordinance, which is adding the snowgates. There's been no changes. We also have the...
And just as an update, Mayor, I believe those snowgates are on their way or have arrived, I'm not sure. I've been talking to Scott last week. He thought they were being, that we were gonna have a delivery fairly soon.
Getting a head nod from Mr. Edwards.
They was on their way out of Montana before the snow hit.
Okay.
So I've talked to Jared McCatt multiple times, and he's like, soon as we get them, he will have the techs come with the delivery truck and put them on. So, I mean, it's just, it's, they built one place, they painted somewhere else, and a snowstorm called on the way in.
Well, the good news is the way we did this amendment is we didn't, we could have reduced another project on spin, but we wanted to show it, illustrate it, and be very transparent on the additional cost of the snowgates. So tonight, it would be the same reading as before, nothing has changed, and I'll make that motion tonight.
All right, thank you. The next one is the second reading of the short-term rental ordinance. Still waiting for the town attorney's feedback on the grandfather clause. And also wanted to talk a little bit more about removing the signage requirement, which is something we talked about at the last work session. I did ask town staff about the current signage requirements and whether or not those are helpful. So I just wanted to have one more conversation about it before we pull it out. It's still in there for this reading, but we can, if this council feels strongly that signage requirements for short-term rentals are not useful within the ordinance, we can always make that change for the third reading. So I'm just, I would like some more feedback from the council on that. If anybody has any. Just trying to pull up the...
I think it should be removed, but...
And your rationale for that was?
Well, safety, because for the size of it, I mean, people have to go on people's property normally to see it. And also, it wasn't really even being upheld as a, like, part of our ordinance until our other S M O showed up, our part-time S M O showed up this summer. So there was quite a few people that weren't even aware of it. I don't think it's necessary, if we have it online, to have it in two places. And...
That was the question. Are we gonna put online the short-term residents and who the contact person is?
We put online the permit numbers and the addresses for now as a start on the town website. We've also, there was a addition...
On the contact card, wasn't it, the agent or whoever, whatever we're calling them?
On the signs, signage requirement currently would be the contact name of who the person is.
Putting that online would be...
The name and the phone number, if I remember.
Yeah. That was my understanding.
So I, this past summer, when Jacob, our summer S M O was here, he did quite a bit of work on going around and identifying which ones were in compliance and which ones were... So from, I mean, I don't know, I'm a little torn about the signage requirement. I don't know how many residents, quite frankly, would walk up to a house to find out, but it does help having signage requirements potentially for the S M O, but I don't know. I'm not hard over either way. I don't think there's harm in leaving it in so long as we enforce it. And I understand we got a lot of things that we need to work on improving the enforcement of. So...
So why would the S M O go there and not just online like a resident would? Or shouldn't they already have that information?
I'm saying if, I'm not sure how they do their daily, you know, he would do his daily business, but if, you know, walking up to it and this is the right house that I'm at, because it's signed.
I don't know that that's safe for our S M O either. Not matter.
I don't know, it's something, but if he's out driving around, oh, I need to stop at this house, I forgot. Sometimes sales service wouldn't rate everywhere here sometimes, but if you just walk up and have to see the number, just have them come to play.
So how many people are actually using this?
Was it six, seven? No.
I'm sorry, how many, does the S M O, like, have an idea of how many people are actually complying with this sign?
Trevor, did Jacob provide a back brief to you on the number of short-term rentals that were in compliance with the signage versus those that weren't?
I think it was somewhere just well 70% were.
Were doing it.
I think. Do you remember?
Oh, that's what he's, he specifically was going to these houses and looking for signage.
Yes, just to try to see who was actually doing it.
And 70%.
But if you, maybe it was only 60%.
I think it's just kind of redundant too, if we already have it online. I just don't know the point to it, but...
All right.
I mean, if they have it in there, I mean, if I was the owner, if I already am required to have it and I have it there, and then now we're like, take it out of your yard. I mean, are they posting it on their house? It's on the house, yeah. I think that's my concern, that I would go into the house, put it, or up to the house to get it. It's much more convenient online.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm kind of torn. I don't know on that piece.
All right.
The grandfather clause is actually definitely something, because I will probably not vote for this ordinance going through if we don't have a grandfather clause in there for people that have owned VRBOs and...
if we don't have a grandfather clause in there for people that have owned VRBOs and are doing them a pro. I guess I don't understand the whole problem. I know we're tightening things up, but to take somebody's accessory dwelling unit that they've had for years and not allow them the potential income that they have retired on? Like that, that's concerning to me. So that's, and then people are building, are we trying to just make sure people aren't building these?
Yeah, I mean.
And not turn into a short-term rental? I mean, can we cap how many short-term rentals we have in the area?
So the biggest feedback I've gotten, first of all, not that we enforce DCCNRs, but that having dwelling space in detached buildings is against the DCCNRs. I've been told that repeatedly since I've been mayor.
Well, just having a short-term rental is against the DCCNRs?
Right. So in, currently in our town code, we, it's very specific. It says accessory buildings cannot have dwelling units in them or dwelling structures. Accessory buildings, not detached garages. That is a little squishy in the verbiage that's in our code. So that's why I think that we still have homes that are, you know, getting built that have, you know, maybe some space above the garage where there's living space. And quite frankly, you know, if I had a detached garage and I could have an extra bedroom up there for my grandkids to sleep in, what's the harm? You know, I don't, I don't get it, but I keep, we keep getting hit with, you know, it's against the DCCNRs and then residents that don't want to see someone build a detached garage specifically to rent it out with dwelling space because of the whole short-term rental, you know, just controversy. So I'm, and if you think about single-family residential zoning, what does that mean?
Can we put it on hold until we hear from our lawyer then on it? I'm not understanding why we're doing a second reading.
Well, that's what the, some of the updates to the short-term rental ordinance were to try and get after making it more clear that having short-term rentals in detached spaces is not allowed by.
So we should probably wait for feedback from him?
I didn't ask him that question. I asked him about the grandfather clause.
I just meant for us to vote on something that we don't know what our lawyer is thinking, like.
We can still make the updates in the third reading for the grandfather clause.
Will we, you expect us to hear back?
Yes, I asked him, I said, we must have an answer on this before January 2nd because we have to post the third reading. And so we need to be able to incorporate the language before then. So I would think we're going to hear from him. Well, I'll ask Trevor to reach out and poke him a little bit to make sure we get an answer. So I can send it to the council so you can hear what he says before we make third reading changes. I mean, it's a thorny issue, this dwelling space in detached structures. I personally don't think it's a thorny issue, but it seems to be to some of our town residents and also to our biggest homeowners association.
I think it's smart to tighten it up for sure. Just so our wording is accurate, but it's like, also I don't think people that already have.
No, I, and I, I hear that. And what you said too, Councilman, just like people that have been doing this and then how do we, well, for one thing, how do we make them stop? They're already doing it.
Throwing property.
Going forward, yeah, I agree with you. So again, we, we find ourselves kind of in the middle of some of these topics sometimes where people have very strong feelings on one side or the other. All right, so we'll reach out to the town attorney again to try and get that answer on the grandfather clause because I do understand the concern there and I, you know, seen where there have been other municipalities that have done similar clauses like that to allow the continuation of an activity, you know, or people that have been doing it in the past while you're trying to clamp down on stopping it going forward. So, okay. Then the next item was any new ordinances for January. Again, just for the council, need to have anything you might want to propose before January 2nd. If we wanted to read it in January, which doesn't mean we need to read it in January, we can always put them forward in January and we can read them in February. I would like to put the ordinance that I had sent out with the holidays, putting that into code for the town.
Why?
Because I think that it would be good to document the town holidays and when they're going to be observed. And putting it in town code gives it the force of law versus having a resolution for a single observance of a single holiday.
So a lot of the documentation you had on it, I'm sorry, I don't know where we're going to talk about that. Like at one point you said that the employees don't have to come in, which we should never put that in ordinance because if we have an emergency, that's going to be a concern. Also, I don't understand why we can't just have a resolution for the one date because it's basically the only one that there has been confusion on that I've found. So I don't know why we need another resolution or another ordinance because we have linked.
Well, then there won't be any concern going forward in seven years when that becomes a problem again. So I.
I don't understand what you mean.
Would propose that we just go ahead and codify what the town holidays are in the ordinance. So it's, we're going to put that ordinance forward in January and.
Mayor to set it up. And that's what I'm saying, like that's what's been happening in the past. And my concern is that we're just not respecting Veterans Day on the actual day. And I don't feel like we need another ordinance for something like that when it's an easy fix, the resolution. And the previous reasons you gave me not to have a resolution for it didn't make any sense because we have multiple resolutions today that we're doing.
And again, those resolutions don't have the force of law. And there's been plenty of resolutions that have been passed probably since the town has been a town that where are those? How are those recorded and followed by subsequent councils? Whereas in the town code, that is what the town council follows.
I think that if it's federal law, we don't need to put it in our town ordinance. But that's what I'm saying. It's already a law. It's not something we need to put in. It's just, I think, needs to be respected. So that's why I brought it up as a resolution.
All right. Well, you can support the holiday ordinance in January or not. That's going to go in as an ordinance.
I think it needs to be rewritten then.
Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is the fraud risk assessment that I believe the town administrator sent out to the council. I don't know if you all had a chance to take a look at it yet or if you had any questions about it. I know Trevor is planning to include some comments about it in the January town newsletter. And I don't know if we put it on our town website yet.
We have one.
Okay, we can post that document on the town website as well. Any questions from the council about the fraud risk assessment document?
When are we going to start implementing some of the suggestions that you made?
We implement a lot of stuff before we begin that assessment. So we're continually looking at things, finding things all the time, especially we have to spend a lot of things. As we find them, we back to the new. So what we do need to do when I find some extra time, write some policies here and there and, you know, we, we have standard operating procedures everyone's aware of, but it helps. I'm not a big write the damn guy, but some things do need to be heard about.
Yeah, Trevor and I did talk about this as far as the recommendations in the assessment so that we can essentially have a report card for how we're doing to implement the recommendations that are made in that document. So we'll make sure we keep track of those. And those that warrant policies, we'll work on those. And we can have an update in January kind of on how we're, where we are with some of those recommendations. We didn't have it on the agenda. We probably should have also just sent out, I think, last Thursday was the town draft audit, which we just got from the auditing firm. And I think the council's aware, but if not, we did get an extension due to the government, federal government shutdown as to when we need to send our audit to the state. So it's not actually due to the state until February. So we have time. We're going to have the auditor come to our January town council meeting to present it. And also we've given the audit to the finance board for review. They're the ones that kind of came up with a lot of the things that were missed last year or that were needing to be corrected. And I didn't want us to be trying to jump through hoops to get it done by the end of December when we only just got it on like December 5th. So we've, we've got time to look at it, but if you have any comments about it or on the audit, please also send those in or let us know. Okay. Any other questions on the fraud risk assessment or the audit? All righty. Mountain Estates petition. So I let the council know that we did get a petition for annexation from Mountain Estates on, it came in before Thanksgiving, but there were some things that were missing. And so it came, was resubmitted with what was missing on December 1st and it was verified by the clerk as being complete on the 2nd. So we do have an annexation petition. We're going to have to work through the statute process. I believe also the town clerk sent out a timeline that we put together on when we have to, you know, try and work towards to get things done by statute. We have to have a public hearing and decision before the town council, not less than 30 days, but not more than 180 days after the petition is verified. So if you count from December 2nd, that puts us to May 31st. We have to have a decision up or down on this.
So have we received financials at all? Because I noticed like on the annexation approval, I mean, what Wyoming state statute says is that it's like supposed to be fiscally something that would be good for us. And as of right now, I'm not seeing how that would be as far as safety as well and all things. But even the county address, I'm going to send these around. Cause I mean, where you can't even get the, I don't even know why we're having this discussion on this thing.
By statute, if we get a petition for annexation, we have to go through the process to determine whether or not it's up or down.
Right. That's the thing. You don't just approve it.
No, we don't. There's a whole process to work through and I sent out the statute and I also sent out our town code that's applicable. The first thing that happens now, or the next thing that happens is that the town has to prepare an annexation report, which will address all those provisions in the statute that we have provided to answer. Some of which are whether or not it's contiguous to the town, whether or not we have the cost and infrastructure information. We need to make an informed decision. So there's a whole list of things in the statute that will be part of the annexation report that the town staff is working on preparing now, a lot of which Ryan is going to be helping us with as far as determining the infrastructure costs.
I feel like it should all be tabled considering what we found out about the property that was built. Can you please pass those along? I can pass them. And then also the information just from the county that the place isn't, the well, the situation that they have that people keep saying isn't a problem, but it's definitely a problem.
And all of that will be part of the annexation report and part of the information that is put before the council. So we know if there are issues, if those issues have been taken care of, if there's new issues, if there's things we haven't thought of. So we're not going to litigate it today and make a decision one way or the other.
But I also feel like it's moving right along anyway. So we should probably have somewhat of a discussion. I am wondering who our lawyer is that's taking care of this?
Our lawyer is town attorney Boils and we have talked with him to make sure he has no conflicts representing the town.
Why would he have a conflict?
I just wanted to double check to make sure he doesn't have a conflict. And he said he would represent the town during this process.
You don't think that even though he represents Dirk Isit, the developer?
Dirk Isit.
How does he not? You specifically told me that he did.
His, I believe his partner may still represent Dirk. Kevin does not.
If they're in office, that is a conflict of interest.
If there's anyone like a common, what a conflict of interest is that Kevin Foils.
The town attorney. And he would have recused himself if he felt there was a conflict and he said he was fine to represent the town.
There's no conflict of interest, even though he knows information about our town and he knows information about who's trying to get in for annexation. You're telling me there's no conflict, even though the same firm has been used for both?
I'm telling you there's.
Cause I was told that he was recusing himself when you told me he was the lawyer.
I think I told you his firm, that his partner, and this was a number of months ago, represented Dirk.
It doesn't matter if it was years ago. That's, I mean, that's a law actually. And it doesn't matter if it's a divorce case, doesn't matter if it's a custody case, matter if it's annexation.
The town attorney has been asked to represent the town and he said he had no conflict. He said he had no conflict of interest in doing so.
Who asked him?
I reached out and asked him because previously he did mention to us that his firm represented Dirk. And so if and when an annexation petition came in, he would make a determination on whether or not he could represent us.
That is not just your authority to choose because that is a conflict.
He's our town attorney.
He represents us in all things.
He's also somebody else's attorney that we are now about to.
He is not Dirk's attorney.
His firm is, if that makes you feel better.
Okay.
It is the same thing.
Well, given that Kevin is, Kevin Boils is an attorney.
Why we think that's acceptable.
He can make that determination. He is much more qualified than anybody sitting here at this table to make that determination.
Can I ask a question about the process of this? So there will be, who will be involved from here putting together information to the town council? Are we, is it the planning commission? Like at what point is the town council going to be involved with the annexation process?
The first thing.
Besides just us giving something that's.
But the next thing that comes, that needs to get done is the annexation report, which the town staff is working on with our town engineer. Once that's prepared, that will be sent out to everyone, including the planning commission. So council, planning commission, everyone will get the, everyone is going to get the information at the same time. It's not going to be piecemealed out. When things are complete, they will be sent out.
But who's preparing that? You're saying the staff?
The staff. Trevor is the lead sled dog with Ryan. Trevor, it, those are your two focal points right there for that.
Okay.
The planning commission has this, Mountain Estates on their agenda for tomorrow, just as an introductory, making sure everybody got the petition package and if they have any initial questions. It is not a formal presentation of the Mountain Estates annexation before the planning commission. That's not going to happen until the, until February, based on the timeline that we put together. So in January, the planning commission will again come back together and review all the petition information. They will have the petitioner at that meeting to answer questions and then they will make a decision on whether the process should proceed. And they're also going to need to look at the annexation report. So that's why they won't have their public hearing until February.
Like where are the financials for this? Cause we asked in February of this year for those and we still haven't received them. So I'm wondering how.
When you say financials, what are you looking for?
Like any financials, how much the infrastructure is going to cost.
There were two documents in the petition package that, from the developer providing the costs of their estimated costs for development.
I hope we are putting this before our financial board, like we already requested back in February, and we still have not received anything. And yet I am hearing how this might be a financial benefit and it will not be financial benefit for quite some time.
It's going to be a financial benefit.
I said, I am hearing that.
Hearing it from where?
From citizens that are obviously hearing it from somewhere.
From citizens who are informed to have that input.
My concern is, yeah, they will have an input, thank you.
No, no, I meant financially. They've determined that this is going to be a benefit.
No, that's what they're telling me they're being told. My concerns.
Being by who?
My concerns for this is that we don't have infrastructure costs on this. We don't have any idea of what this is going to cost our town.
Well, if you read what the process is, we will have all of that as part of the annexation report that's being put together.
Well, we asked for it last February. So that's why I guess I'm, yeah, it was in the minutes.
Well, and also last February, I remember there was concern that was voiced because we had actually asked our town engineer at that time to lean forward and update the impact assessment when we didn't have an annexation petition. And so there hasn't been.
That wasn't in February?
It was earlier this year. So there was concern from the council voiced at that time that we were putting any money or time or effort into determining costs for a development that we weren't annexing.
Volunteering, so they're free. So they could actually already have had this to us.
And we'll have to ask the finance board where they are with that. I know they've been asked to look at it and I haven't seen anything from them yet.
And I think that's also why I want it known as far as what the county is requiring for this to be structured.
The county?
Yeah. The county has not done any approval and like it's pending until things are done on the property.
Approving what?
The build out of the subdivisions.
The county has approved the master plan for that subdivision.
But it is contingent on things that are not being completed yet. So that's why I'm having a hard time for us to even be considering until those things are completed. Because I don't want us to approve something preemptively and then be caught with the cost of all of that.
We won't. And all of the, as far as any concerns about existing infrastructure over there will be brought to light as part of our annexation report and us having all the information in front of us to make a decision. So I, whatever the county has and hasn't approved or corrected, I don't know. So I whatever the county has and hasn't approved or corrected, I don't know, but it doesn't have any real bearing on this because we have to make a decision based on what we find out in our annexation report, what the costs are gonna be.
I know, I think that's my concern.
Your separate pathways.
Yeah.
They are not separate. The county is requiring.
Then you don't understand the process.
Well, I do understand the far as far as the water that's up there is incorrect and yet we're looking.
What information do you have to say, Trent? You gotta be very careful.
It actually says it right here in the county. No, I'm fine to say it.
If it's an annex, the county stuff goes out the window.
I know, but we still have to deal with it.
They.
There is a reason the county is requiring it.
Access to the road is on both of them.
I'm sorry?
Access to Vista West would be on both pieces. Why would the finance board go ahead and review something that hadn't even been submitted? It will be submitted now, so now they can review it.
We've already had discussion about the finance board doing it before now.
No, we didn't.
Yes, we did.
You raised a question of why Ryan did some preliminary stuff and you objected to the cost of that.
That was actually Katie, but yes, I did object.
But that was not an official petition for annexation.
I understand.
We now have it. Now it can go through the process, which will take it to the finance board.
I quite honestly feel like it should be pending an approval at this point for us to even be looking at it.
It is pending. It's a proposal that has come to the town.
What I'm saying is to even look at it because it doesn't meet all the annexation Wyoming state statutes, even for what was approved by Jamie that was sent out at the beginning back in November, the last week in November. Like, that's what I'm saying.
But it was in Jamie has approved what was submitted based upon Wyoming law. Now it moves to the next step.
But how does she know?
Hold on a second. The town clerk has an administrative task to certify that the petition contains the documents that the statute requires it to have.
Yes, I understand.
That is all she did. She has no approval authority, so let's just be careful using verbiage. So that is the only role the clerk has played in this so far and everything that was submitted in the petition was what the statute said needed to be submitted. And that, check, check, check on the checklist. So now we are obligated as a municipality to follow the rest of what's in the statute. And that is what we're going to do and we have 180 days to do it. So and no decisions will be made until we have as much information on costs, pros and cons to the town, either short term or long term.
Can we get a timeline for that?
We have a timeline that was sent out yesterday.
No, for the finances.
That's gonna be part of the annexation report, which will be before, it should be by the end of January is what we're shooting for, to have the annexation report done so that we can get in front of the planning commission on the 11th of February for a public hearing. And then we would come before the town council, potentially by the end of March. We have to give ourselves a little flexibility with the timeline because we have to be done one way or another with a decision by the end of May, so. And I will ensure that the council has all the information as it's prepared, as far as costs, as far as infrastructure, pros and cons, anything that comes in for this. And we've provided everything we have to date. And right now, the biggest piece that's being worked is the annexation report so that we can answer these things that the statute says the town has to address in order to determine that a property should be annexed or shouldn't be annexed. So I would just encourage the council to please read through the statute and also read through the timeline, read through the other documentation as far as the process. It's 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 a lot and it's it can be confusing to understand who's doing what at what time. So that's why we tried to lay it out in a timeline.
Is this in an email?
Yes, I did send this out. I sent this and then our two chapters of our town code, which are 51 and 151 and 152 are what's specific to annexation. But I can I can make a note to resend it, but I believe I sent it out. So. Okay. So we'll be talking about Mountain Estates a lot for the next several months. I wanted to put it on the agenda for right now, just to make sure everybody got the documents if anyone had any questions about the process. Okay, moving on, board reports. Councilman Bitter, has the finance advisory board met since we last met? I'm guessing probably not.
No, we were waiting for the audit report, so we will take care of that. Probably be in Zoom this month or prior to the, I think it's the 13th of January meeting, okay, internally before we meet with the orders.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilman Ellis, do you have natural resources board?
Natural resources took a break in January, December and January, they're not meeting.
Okay. For the planning commission, last met on Wednesday, November 12th. We had a plat amendment. Actually, those already, do those already come up? Those are coming up on the agenda tonight, correct? Okay. So we have two plat amendments. Then there's a third plat amendment, but that one I don't think is coming this tonight. It'll be the following month because there's it's still out for public comment. We had an update on the master plan and the survey. The planning commission is currently drafting a report of the survey results, which we're hoping to have by the end of January. And we did talk again about getting the process going in 2026 to rezone the Sunrise Mountain Estates subdivision, which is currently on our zoning map as planned residential development, but it should really be single family residential at this point. It was annexed in as planned residential, but we'd like to go ahead and move that to single family residential. So we'll be working on that rezone next year. I think that was pretty much it. The planning commission will only meet once in December, which will be tomorrow. Roads advisory board, I don't believe, met. Travel and tourism board. Councilman Toolson?
They haven't met.
They haven't met either? Okay. How about the water utility board?
They meet next week.
Okay. All right, so typically we will, the council, we switch up council liaison assignments in the new year. So I would like Councilman Bitter, would you please be the liaison for the travel and tourism board starting in January?
Sure.
And then Councilman Toolson, can you take the NRB? Councilman Merrill, the finance board.
Yes.
And Councilman Ellis, the roads board. Okay. And I'm gonna take the water board. All right. Let's take a look at the regular agenda items for tonight. So we've got the usual call to order pledge, need a motion to reconvene the regular meeting, adopt the agenda. We don't have any announcements or proclamations. We'll have public comment. Then we'll have the consent agenda items for ordinances. We already went over those, which we just have the two old ordinances, the budget amendment and the short term rental second reading. We do have a number of resolutions and motions, so we will have the motion to authorize the mayor to accept the bid for the residential water meters. There will be a resolution to update the fee schedule, which I wanna come back to that one in just a second. And then we have a resolution designating the first Friday of December as the town's annual tree lighting ceremony. So Councilman Merrill, would you read that one when we get to it?
Sure.
Okay. Then we also have a public hearing for the two plat amendments and then that is it for the schedule. But on the, you should have got, you should have received also the town packet. Which now I've lost it. Anyway, there's a resolution, the the fee schedule resolution is to update and include the septic permit fee, which I believe we have in the resolution right now at 450. So and we talked about this at our last meeting. I know Councilman Bitter, you had some concern that 450 was too much. You wanted to see it stay at 300, which is what the county currently charges. But I believe that after the staff has looked at this again, I believe building official Kazir noted, there's even more that's going to have to be done on to take over this septic inspection. So 450 is.
I think I think they're missed, they're they're not looking at the overall whole cost of the permitting process because if you look at our permitting of the town versus outline, right, for a 2,000 square foot home, we're charging already regardless of the septic, because they're they're plugged into the sewer, we're $1,200 higher than the town of that kind of outline. So the question becomes, how do you even justify a 50% increase in cost above what the county was doing? And again, it's gonna be cheaper for the town to start out their ranch to do the septic inspections versus the county. So I'm really struggling with how we got there. And because of the affordability issue that everybody is is, you know, has front and center right now, I just think it's a very bad look. And I I can't figure out how we can justify it, above that.
Okay. Can I get some feedback from the rest of the council on the current proposed 450 fee for the septic?
Well, I do agree with Wade as far as our meter pit, like installation seems excessive. And then if we're making our septic excess as excessive as well, that's not a good look or what we're trying to accomplish. I think the only concern would be that Scott had mentioned that we have other fees that might be coming up with it. So honestly, I don't know that we should be voting on it until we know all that it would take for them to go out and look.
So for the septic.
In reality, the county was never doing anything other than issuing a piece of paper for the $300 septic permit. They didn't even do the percolation test.
They were still doing an onsite visit.
Their their onsite assessment, it was only placement, though. It didn't, they weren't looking at.
I agree.
So the way we're gonna do it will be more involved. And I, you may be right, looking at the overall picture, that's not something we looked at. But we'll say that given the amount of stuff we're adding on to our employees, we're at the point of it's a struggle to get everything done. And we didn't factor in initially the cost of the training, you know, two different training classes, two guys, meals, travel, hotel. Between Jamie and Scott, they found a lot of stuff last week that we're gonna have to address that the county never has been.
So with the concerns voiced by Councilman Merrill and Councilman Bitter and the fact that we have a new budget season coming up again here in a few months, and we did talk about.
Exactly.
Wanting to ensure we start looking at fees sooner in the process than we did this past year, perhaps we should just go with what the county fee of 300 is for now, just so we can at least if there are permits and things that are waiting on this. I know there were some that were kind of in process before we were gonna take this on and now that it's wintery, I don't know how much, how many septics are going in in this kind of environment, but who knows? So we could make that decision to just fold at 300 for now until we can do a more holistic look at things as part of the next budget cycle. Would that be acceptable to everyone?
Are there things waiting on this?
I think that makes more sense, but I would request that the town take a look at providing, instead of nickel and diming every little inspection piece, try and build it into the overall inspection cost so you have one and done. It just makes more sense. It's more efficient and everybody knows what that cost is on on a cost per square foot basis, just just to keep things very efficient and clean. But thank, yeah, I'm I'm very appreciative of listening to me hard on it. It's only 150 bucks, but I think it sends the right message that we are concerned about affordability, above that.
And I think, to answer your question, Councilman Merrill, that there's a couple of septic permits sitting there now. Am I wrong about that?
We get calls frequently about when we're taking over. It just appears that people are, wanna deal with us more than they wanna deal with other.
And I I think there were a couple of maybe modular homes that had already been permitted that were, you know, is the county doing it or are we doing it at this point? So it may, if we can just add the fee now in the event that there's anything Scott can take on or the staff can take on to finish those out if they haven't been done yet as far as the permitting. Cause I think the county has been aware that we're gonna take this over. So I think they've kind of done a little bit of that, too. Okay, so let's go ahead and change that to 300. So we'll make that adjustment for tonight for the packet. And then we will, we won't make, I I we'll just make sure we look at the fees and make those changes to coincide with the next budget and not be trying to put any shoehorn any other ones in. It's just that since we're taking over this new process, let's at least get a fee out there so that we can move forward with any permit if we need to. Okay. That is it for tonight's any, okay, matters from the mayor and council. Councilman Merrill, do you have anything else?
No.
Councilman Toolson?
No.
Councilman Ellis?
No.
Councilman Bitter, anything else?
No, that's it for me.
All right, great. Can I get a recess to adjourn the meeting until 7:00 PM this evening?
I'm hoping we recess the meeting until 7:00 PM.
Oh, it's gonna be recessed until 7 o'clock tonight.
All right, it's been made by Councilman Bitter and seconded by Councilman Toolson. Is that okay? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are recessed.